Okay, okay, we'll call this meeting to order. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, put your hand over your heart and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys. Mike, would you do the invocation for us, please?
Yeah, if you'd all reflect with me for a moment, please guide tonight's deliberations. As always, ensure that our decisions are made. The decisions we make are fair and transparent. Please make sure that all decisions are in the best interest of all those involved. We ask, amen.
Board Secretary, would you or Board Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Sure, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
And President Robert Uten.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we, I know we had a communication from Mr. Moser. Was there any other communications?
No, Mr. President, there was not.
Let me. Is there an appropriate place in the in the board to discuss his comments? I guess. Alan, do you know, when's an appropriate place to discuss Mr. Moser's comments?
Mr. President, hi. This might be the appropriate time if it's public. Are we on public comments?
Yes.
No.
Well, no, no, we're not in public comments, but I don't think we have any ceremony matters or presentations, do we?
That's correct.
And so let's go to public comments, and I'm sorry, Alan.
Yeah, this would probably be the appropriate place.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to respond, Mr. President?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, as you know, the board does not want me to, you know, necessarily do a bunch of research in response to those, the sorts of comments that we did receive. However, a review of the Brown Act will show that the, what is required to be reported is final settlements and only when the settlement is final or the details are so final that we are only accepting what has been proposed to us. When the details of a settlement are still tentative, then we're not required to disclose anything. Of course, it's the board's discretion whether they want to engage in briefings for the public as they're negotiating lawsuits. And that would, I guess that would be possible, but it might be a little awkward. But we, in this case, we received a settlement offer that had wrong facts and we sent a letter back based on board direction that we would not accept that settlement agreement, but we also said that if you have accurate facts, we could consider those in another communication. And we didn't totally foreclose the door on settlement, but we just let them know that they had presented no facts that would suggest that our rate payer should pay a settlement. And as you know, over the course of the litigation, we ended up with a dismissal from them without comment as to why they dismissed. But that's, that's how it happened and we acted in compliance with the law. The board can always do more than what the law requires, but it would be very awkward to give briefings on where we are in negotiations of lawsuits. And you have any other questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
Any of the board members have questions?
It's good explanation.
Okay, let's go on to the consent calendar.
Well, what about public comments? Anybody else?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Do you, Madam Clerk, do you see any hands raised?
I did not, sir.
Okay, let's go on to the, the, the consent calendar then. Does any director have an item that they want to pull or do I hear, hear a recommendation for approval?
I'll move for approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let's move on down the agenda, please. Okay, we go to general managers' reports. And this is a an award of $150 for an idea to improve safety conditions. Scott, do you want to explain it or?
Sure, Mr. President, thank. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll, I'll, I'll explain the proposed rewarding ideas submission. So we received a submission by Brian Pringer, our wastewater maintenance worker one. Physician. He submitted a rewarding idea to improve safety conditions, specifically when staff is out late at night transporting a portable generator to a pump station. As you probably know, many of our pump stations have very limited illuminations. It's dark outside. It can be hard for not only our staff to see, but for oncoming motorists to see. So Brian's suggestion was to put reflective decals on the generators. So similar to what you see on fire trucks. So when motorists have their high beams on or their lights on there and they're driving, they can see their reflectors on the generators. So they will know there's an obstacle in the street. They can see where staff is. It just adds a little more safety to staff and also to motorists. So I thought it was, we thought that was a good idea. It went to the process. Everyone agreed it's a great idea. And so staff is recommending the board approve rewarding Brian $150 for his idea.
Do they, do they normally put out cones and this is just an additional additional process to im- improve motors? Not, not running into the generator.
Correct.
Does, do any of the board members have any questions?
I'll move for approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We'll go on to the second item under general manager's report. Consideration for naming a district facility after former board member, James Fairman. Scott, are you going to do this?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. So staff for requesting two, two action items from the board tonight regarding this item. The first action is consider amending administrative policy number 70, which is the renaming of a district facility. There are two suggestions or actually two types, two directions from the board. One is that, do you want to define, define facilities? Broaden that definition by including renaming rooms. For example, the boardroom is an option, an option or, or a conference room. It just gives the board some flexibility of naming some additional facilities in the district. So, so if you do want to include rooms, please let direct staff do that and we'll amend the, the policy. And then the, the second item we want the board to consider or give us direction is regarding section 7.3. And it says, we're seeking clarification on this session because it's intended for, we, we want to know if you believe it's intended for deceased or alive people or both. Basically, it says when that session states when naming after a person or a person's written documentation of approval by the next of kin to be honored is, is, is received and part of the, the application. So we just need some clarification from the board. Do you consider that for someone's deceased? Someone's alive or both? If it's, if you, we're, we're talking about someone's deceased, but maybe you're not. If you're, if you want to include, that does include someone who's alive, that makes it a little easier on our, on our end when we're submitting an application or when someone's submitting an application. So those are two directions we're seeking from the policy. Then the third, the third direction we're seeking from the board is if that, if you want us, if you want to consider renaming a district facility by our longtime former board member, James Fairman, give staff direction and then we'll begin the process. That process begins with the Citizens Advisory Committee. So we would, we would submit a request to the CAC. Also give us some suggestions and then ultimately they would make that recommendations to the board and we bring that back to the board and, and then the board would make decision. So that concludes my presentation. I have to answer any questions you may have.
Do any of the directors have questions?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I just thought that this is a great idea. I like it and, and, but I, I think it would be nice if we did it for people who are alive as well. Because for the simple matter that when you run, you don't even know that you were recognized. So, you know, that's my own feelings. But I like the whole idea of going through the different rooms, the offices and that way. We did that with our one on Wilson, you know, for Rob Hamers, which was real nice, just on the outside for him. That's it.
Do any of the other directors have questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Brett?
Yeah, thank you. Two questions. First, Scott. Roughly, how many rooms? You know, obviously the policy is already for facilities, buildings, but how many rooms are we talking about? Do you think that this could be applicable to?
At headquarters, three rooms would be applicable. And then possibly we could also do, though not many people would see it, but we could also, there is the, the meeting room with the yard. And we also have the additional building there that's used as storage. That used to be the Hitchcrafter Building. That still exists. That's, that's also another option.
Got it. And then a second question. So in, because I, I agree with Director Schaefer about, you know, the living and the, you know, deceased and all that. But I'm just trying to clarify because on four, six, it says a person living whose contribution or significant gift is blah, blah, blah. Does that not cover it already or am I missing something?
You know, a- a- again, that's a good question and I think that's up for interpretation. That's why we want some clarification on this one section. If, if we can include living, I think it, it covers everything.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so, you know, in general, yeah, I think this is a great plan. I'd definitely support a living and in addition to those who have passed. And, you know, for 10 plus rooms or 10 or less, whatever, I, I think it's a pretty straightforward policy with some minor amendments. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any, any other directors?
Yeah, Bob, I have a, I, I like Arlene's idea. But what would you be asking the CAC to do to verify that we've already changed the policy, Scott? Or what would, why would you be taking it to the CAC?
Well, the, the, the policy, that's what the, if you read the policy, that's the first step. It goes through, it goes through the CAC for, for review and recommendations. So before we take it to the CAC, we thought we might, we want to be clear on, on these proposals, on, on the procedures. And so we would bring, we would, at our, at their March meeting, we would inform the CAC that the board has made these changes to the policies and they directed staff to proceed with beginning of the process of considering renaming of the facility after former board member, James Fairman. And then the CAC would bring that up for discussion and open up for public comments as well as far as what facility they believe would be ideal for the board to, to approve.
You know, the only thing I, I don't know if the CAC, some of them are brand new members potentially coming up that don't know the people that we're talking about. You know, some there that do know, but not the majority of them. I would, I would think that's the only negative thing I would say.
Yes, well, if he knows the, in the procedure, it does just say you have to describe why is this person warranted such a warranted such an acknowledgement. And so you, so we would, we would listen to our staff report. Here's all the accomplishments, you know, or the contributions. James Fairman, a former board member, James Fairman has contributed to, to the community, which is, as you know, over 40 years, right? And so it was quite a long list of what he's contributed. And so we would share that with the CAC and it's really ultimately up and then be up to them what facility to, to name it after, after. And again, if they, if they, they don't come up with a decision, that, that's fine. We'd still come to the board and say, okay, well, the, the, the CAC didn't have a, an affirmative facility, affirmative answer. So, but here's, here's what they discussed. And so now we're seeking direction from the board.
As long as we have the ultimate authority, then that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it ultimately, it's the board's decision. There, again, their advisory committee, they make recommendations. And again, you don't have to approve the recommendations. But, you know, again, they're, they're advisory board, so they do not have the final say.
Okay, that answers my question. And, and any other directors' comments?
Yeah, Bob, I'm the only other one that has a comment. It's other than you. So essentially, Scott, on seven, three, under procedure, if, if you just say when naming after a, when, when naming posthumously or you just need to change some verbiage in the rest, in the, the procedure, right?
Yes, I, I just, well, we just want to make sure on, on section seven, three, that when we're talking about, when we're seeing, when we're talking about next, do we need to get a next of kin's approval? That was, that was the big issue. And, and if that was the case, then you know, is that necessary for someone who's living? So as long, as long as we get direction from the board as that you're fine with that section, I mean, it could be living or, or deceased. Then that makes our job a lot easier.
Okay, I just, I think we need to clarify under seven, three, something about, you know, when, when doing a posthumous naming that we get the next of kin approval, let's just clean it up that way. I mean, you don't need to clean it up after someone who's living because we're going to ask them for approval. I hope that they're, yeah. Yeah. And then I'm not sure how to say this other than naming inside of a building. There are a much more limited amount of the public that's going to see that name and recognize. I just like the outdoor facilities, especially in the case of Jim. I, I want as many people to see it as possible. So a lift station or, or an exterior notice or sign or whatever makes a lot more sense to me than naming a boardroom or a meeting room because we don't get that much public in there. But there are thousands of people who drive by our pump stations. So I, I just, as you talk to the CAC, I, I would kind of hope we, we'd lean that way.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's a good point. I like what Mike said. And it made me think broader, like, why can't we even for the Wilson facility wind up doing rooms there for people if we wanted to? And the pump stations, I think that's a great idea. But I, I do like the idea he said too about turning around and having it somewhere it's visible that people never go into to see.
Yeah, I, Scott, my, my comment would be, I, I think, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to put it in the policy or the procedures, but maybe a list of what staff thinks would be appropriate places, you know, where, where a name might be affixed. Yeah, and I do think that the, although we've named the yard after Rob, there, there, there are two major buildings down there. You know, we have a building at Polerino. The other thing is, is if, if they, if, if, if the board decides on a room, when we have a Zoom meeting or, or a notice to the public meeting, you know, we could include that, that person's name in that in the invitation. You know, that
Exactly, exactly right.
You know, I don't know what, you know, we'll mull that over. Anyway. See, let's see. So this, this requires, would someone make a motion?
What are we moving?
You know, we
Yeah.
Well, I think we're moving to, to amend the, the procedure and can we scroll down to what, what, what is the action items?
Mr. President, so the, the action we're asking is amending administrative policy number 7.70 and then direct staff to begin the process of considering renaming the district facility after James Fairman.
I will, I will move the staff recommendation on both items.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? I think staff's got direction.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
So next we go to engineers' reports. Receiving file the, the capital improvement project status report. Does any of the directors have any questions on, on this item? I, I, I have one comment. I, I think there's, there's four force main, four force, there's four force main projects, I think, in that list. And there's also a force main evaluation project. So probably a, a fourth of the projects have to do with force mains. I, I would like, I, I know that we, we moved the money out of the force main project, I think into the, into the Bristol Siphon project, but I think it's important that the staff see the, the, the progress made and, and the criteria used for how those four force main projects got created. So I, 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 yeah. I, I think it would be appropriate to go back and maybe the next study session, you know, go over that process and see if we need to have a force main evaluation project. You know, I, I think we, as a district, we've been moving along, but at one time we thought it was important to have that force main project. And so that's my comment.
Bob, I have a question.
Yep. Yes, sir.
At this point, will Mark be handling, and I guess I'll turn this over to you and Scott. At this point, will Mark be handling the update? Or will Michael continue? What, what's the, what's the direction we're going with, with, with reporting on this?
Yeah. No, I, I think, I think Michael will have to continue because he's doing the projects. Mark might review the report. Or Mark will probably have some ideas about how to how, how, how the report is presented and whatnot. And, you know, I have some ideas. Some, some projects take three, three pages and it just says, you know, project is continuing. But so I think it's worth having Mark look at it.
If I may, Mr. President, so this, this would be Mark's responsibility. It says engineers' report. So he would be responsible for submitting this report to, to the board. Obviously, Mike Benish is now the project manager for most of these projects. So there'll be some coordination between Mark and Mike. But ultimately, it's going to be Mark's responsibility to complete this report and present it to the board and be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Well, in that regard, Scott, will Mike Bemish, Bemish still be in the meetings?
No, he doesn't need to unless we request him to be in the meetings.
Is that immediate?
He's not here tonight, Bob.
He's not here tonight. So yes, so.
It's already, it's already, it's already been immediate. Okay. Yeah, Scott, President Newton, this is Mark Esker. Couple of comments on that. I did review this. I do want to make some changes. Hopefully you'll see the changes reflected on the next report. And, and there's a transition going on between me and the consulting firm that was acting as the district engineer. And I see this report being transitioned to much sooner or more quickly than some of the other tasks. And I am attending some of the construction meetings, Mr. Uten. And so hopefully I'll get a handle on this. And then I want to back up to your other comment or question on force main assessments. I'm in the process of working out the capital budget. I will be, when, once I kind of get it worked on a little bit, my plan is to run it by our general manager. And I'm working on that with Mike Benish. And so maybe we could present that through the budgeting process, although I am happy to provide it in the next work session. But since I'm working on a budget to include all of those things or not include those things, maybe we can do it in all one fell swoop. Just my thoughts. Yeah. I, I think it should be a study session item. The budget is, 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 has got a lot of information in it and you know, to highlight, highlight that one particular area might or might not happen.
Yeah, I agree with you, President. I'd like to see a study session.
Okay, do we have any other comments on the, the capital improvements project status report? Looking forward to your work, Mark.
Yes, we all are.
All right, we scroll down to local meetings. Orange County Sand District, you know, they, they were very busy this month. I attended actually four meetings. The first one was, well, th- these aren't in order, but we went on a virtual tour, I think Director Perry and I did. And, you know, I, I used to have the opportunity to lead those tours. I wanted to go on it because, you know, it's been almost 15, 16 years since, since, since I retired from the Orange County Sand District.
Can Bob, I was trying, I was trying to interrupt you, but I was on mute. I apologize. Yeah, we, we didn't get a treasurer's report or an attorney's report.
Oh, no, well, there was none. Okay, do, do we have a treasurer's report or an attorney's report?
I don't have anything this evening, Mr. President.
Sorry for skipping over you, Mark. Alan, Alan, do you have an attorney's report?
Well, I was just going to report to the board that the, in the new Corona COVID-19 appropriations bill, they actually have money in it for disadvantaged communities, for people who got behind on their utility bills, including their sewer bill. And it's kind of amazing. The board can pat themselves on the back for going over to the assessment district procedure that you have done, which was done by my predecessor. I, I take no credit for it. But it's really, really nice to have the county handling those collection matters. In my other sanitary district, they actually do disconnections. And it's, it's kind of ugly right now with people got behind and now, you know, they have to go out and maybe go out with the backhoe and dig, dig up their line. So ugly thing and you don't have to deal with that. So that was a wise decision on this board a long time ago to go with the county assessment district procedure.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Schaefer, for keeping me straight.
I kept, I kept trying to interrupt you, but I, then I noticed I was on mute and it didn't work. So I, I apologize, Bob. I didn't, didn't need to.
I, actually, I had you on mute.
I, I had no doubt.
Anyway, the, I attended the operations committee and it was basically also a lot of pre- plant rehab and odor projects and, and they had, they, they have updates generally and parts of their system and they updated the collection system, capital improvements project, and they have a massive regional collection system. There are three strategic plan sessions that directors and alternates are involved in right now. You can go online and you can read the, the 2019 strategic plan for Orange County Sand District. There, so one third of, of that plan, those, those plan elements were, were discussed by directors. And they mainly dealt with security, personnel topics, safety topics and finances. And the Orange County, the, the, the boards of directors' meeting will be this next Wednesday. And it'll be the standard committee reports from the admin committee, the operations committee, the legal committee and legal and public affairs committee. And I'll, I'll stop there. Anyway, a lot, lot of activity, an abnormal amount of activity with the Orange County Sand District. This particular month.
Bob, can I add a couple of things to that?
Sure.
Virtual tour. Just some fact that I wrote down. There's, they process 1.35 million pounds of salt per day that is sent to the ocean, which is, I didn't know.
Wow.
There's two plants, plant one in Fountain Valley and plant two in Huntington Beach. They have waste haulers to bring in the waste and they dispose of the waste for these waste haulers, which I didn't, I didn't know how big that was, but it's pretty big. And they get 125 million gallons a day comes into the plant from different cities for the waste. They, they process 189 million gallons of wastewater per day. And they try to block all odors with different, different techniques to stop the odors from coming out while, while they're processing it. Let me see, go down my list here. They say anything floating is caught and anything that drops is caught. So get, get the water as pure as possible. And they have birds that sit on these water. And they have birds that sit on these water.
Clear fires, yeah.
Fires that eat the snails that, that, they eat, the birds eat the snails that come onto the water, which I didn't know that was happening, which is pretty good. And they take all the sledge to either to Yuma or to other composting facilities in California. So they do take it out of the state.
Yeah. Go ahead. A, a, a little fact, Mark, Mark Esker designed the Septic, Septic Waste Receiving Station.
But like Bob said, I think the virtual tour is really good. It lasted an hour and it's really bang, 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 bang. It was tough to keep notes, but I did it anyway, so. I'll submit those with my, I'm not going to put these down as reimbursements, just I, just that I attended the meeting.
Yeah, no, I'm not charging for them either, but. Hundred and eighty-nine million gallons a day is enough to fill Anaheim Stadium two point five times.
Right.
That's how much, that's how much wastewater they process. And a lot of those salts that aren't mentioned come from the inland empire. And then, and, and that's the reason for the sorry line is to bring salts down. And they pass through plant one, go to plant two and then on to the ocean.
They did a really good job of virtual tour.
Oh, yeah, then, yeah. Let's see, who is next? Oh.
All the Santa, that was last, that was after a meeting of last month, yeah.
Yeah. How about Secretary Schaefer for ISDAQ?
Okay, on ISDAQ, we got together as a Zoom naturally. And at that time, we talked about the. General meeting that was coming up on the twenty-eighth of January. And so we discussed about the agenda, what it'd be like and, and this was our first time, so it was kind of. Exciting but scary. And we had for our. Speaker. Don Barnes, who is a, he's not only a sheriff, but he's also a coroner. Very interesting person. And he, I don't know how many of you went to it, but he's been in there for thirteen years now in that position. And he did a great job. What a background. I wish I could have read it all. It was, but I didn't want to take the time because he's so limited on time, he's in everything, so that was good. And then after that, we talked about Larry Dick. He's going to be leaving his position as second vice president. And so we had to, we had to think about filling that. And then also, we had already had Eileen. From Irvine Ranch Water District, she wasn't reelected and so we had to fill that one and that's ledge, legislation time. So. There was Brooke Jones, I don't know how many of you know him, but he's from.
Yorba, Yorba Linda Water.
Yorba Linda Water, yeah. And so I talked, he called me and I talked to him quite a bit and. I think he'll do a great job, you know, and him and I can work together on this legislation. So this is good. And, but, but we decided that we couldn't do it as far as. The vote because of having somebody else knew that had to come in and need to, we could do all, well, two of them at the same time. So this next meeting will have both candidates and we'll see what comes out of that one. We'll interview them. And then on the Waco one, that was Friday on the eighth, and that was actually. It was a program on sources and sinks and. It's a scientific look at the earth itself and emissions. And what they mean with the water, what, what it would do. And the speaker was Michael Gunson. And he's global change and energy program manager. So that was very interesting to hear that. And then, let's see, reports. Then after that, we had reports, which was by Kathy Green from, who did the one from Metropolitan Water District. Linda, Kathy, Orange County one, Linda Ackerman. And then we had. I had a study session on Zoom, which we all did on the twelfth, and then executive board. All morning for CSDA on the fifteenth. And then we, we kind of took a break and then went into a, a board meeting with CSDA. So that was four hours. Quite a long time, but it's the first one of the year, so it's a big thing. And our president Ryan is going to do a great job. He's really good and he's with the mosquito. Vector district, so, let's see what else. Then. Of course, we had Don Barnes on the twenty-eighth, Sheriff. And then I had a legislation committee meeting on CSDA, on orientation meeting on Zoom. And Heather's going to sit on that, or she is sitting on it with, with me. And there's probably about thirty-some odd people on it. And then Stacy is going to be on the professional development committee that I'm on too, so that's it.
Okay, next is. SDRMA, Mike.
Just real brief, we had our board meeting earlier in February. Primary purpose of this board meeting was to go over our financial situation from our investment folks, which we did. We also talked, I hate to be redundant, but we keep talking about this captive insurance agency that SDRMA is forming in Utah. We've completed most of the preliminary steps and by June, we should have a captive. Insurance agency out of the state of Utah, which will help us recoup, hopefully, better on our investments because it gives us more freedom, but. Again, this SDR meeting, SDRMA meeting was primarily to go over financials and glad to answer any questions if anybody hasn't.
We're in a lower rates.
Actually, actually, I, I keep touting the fact that our workers' comp rates are going down, but. As Scott and Diana are painfully aware, we, we had some situations recently that caused our experience modification to go up. The property casualty rates, I will tell you that, that, that is my big project on the SDRMA board this year is. We need to expand our ability to go to other reinsurers to see if we can get better rates on. You know, our, the broker arrangement we have with our broker. We may need to revisit that, so my, my, my commitment to you, Director Perry, is to do everything I can to lower rates.
Sounds good. I always like to hear that.
Me too, buddy, me too.
Any other meetings qualifying for reimbursement?
Mr. President, I have one.
Director Eccles.
I'm not going to repeat because Scott gave us an update at our study session for, for the members of the public who may not have seen that or tuning in today. Due to the Newport Beach City Council meeting recently where they directed their staff. The council directed their staff to enter into a, a contract, a new contract negotiations with their current provider, CR R and R. And they're going to have some obvious changes that we're probably all familiar with. Fortunately, our district has been through this and, but Newport's going to have some. Certainly some rate increases and, and different requirements and some changes in their trash contract. That will be out, I'm sure in the coming, coming weeks ahead. The other thing, just for members of the public, they are a little bit different than, than our special district, that we are a special district and they're a city. The, the residents aren't going to see their rates, it's, it's through the city's general fund is one thing to note for those who are familiar with that. But that's the high level overview and Scott gave his report at our last meeting, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Brett, I have a question. This is Mike, if you don't mind. Did they, how much discussion did they have on their recycling fee? That thing is taking a huge jump. And obviously, it's, it's, it's a separate fee, I think, on their water, on their water portion, right?
Correct, yeah.
What did they have to say about that, anything? Except to cover their tails?
Yeah, I think they didn't spend a whole lot of time on that because I'm not sure they were as versed and familiar. With what, with what really that means and I don't think they were prepared to discuss that in great detail. They did bring it up and it was going to be a part of their future. Study session and ultimately council review about what all that entails. So they spent, the whole discussion was probably. Fifteen minutes max and they spent maybe five minutes on that, I think. The council member O'Neill or Brenner asked about that and it was kind of a short and sweet answer, but. Sounds like more details will be forthcoming to all of them.
Are you talking about more noise coming forthcoming?
Well, that's another way of putting it, sure.
I appreciate you participating in that and updating us. That's, that's valuable to know what's going, because we, we do get a lot of comparison and some, frankly, some flack, so. Thank you for attending that, it was appreciated.
Absolutely. Now, that's, that's going to be a big issue for obviously all of us and. So as we talked about, I think, a prior board meeting, at some point when that's finalized in other cities and special districts. You know, we, we've asked staff to kind of put a side-by-side comparison of every district and city. I think that's going to go a long way for public transparency and also to show that, hey, you know, our, our district's doing a good job with what we've got, so.
Thanks, bud.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think they wanted to put off the recycling fee, or, or I think they said they were going to put it off to a future meeting, but. And it's not been decided. The, the, I think the present fee is three dollars and speculation is it's going to increase and just how much, we don't know yet.
Hey, Bob, I, I have some meetings I attended also.
Okay.
Okay, I, in second of February, I attended the city council meeting. It was a fairly short meeting, but they named it Black History Month. And it was first observed in nineteen seventy-six nationally. And then the public comments, the same ones come back, smart and final noise request. And then the Triangle Square signage proposal, but the most of the new business that took place was the appointments of all the new city commissioners. And that was kind of amazing how they did it, but that's, the bulk of the meeting was on those items. And then also, you know, we attended that orientation meeting that you went over already. And then I think Arlene talked about the Waco meeting. And then the planning commission, this is, this meeting took forever. This is like, and they had to. Stop it at, at like eleven-thirty or twelve o'clock at night, because most of the discussion was about the signage at Triangle Square. And it's new lot sign concept for shopping center, including electronic signs to be used for on and off, on and off-site advertising. And a development agreement by the city, agreement by organs by the city, so. A lot of people were anti the signs going in at Triangle Square. A lot of people were for, especially the business people that would help their business increase. Their profits, which is, you know, one thing you have to look at. And they continued this discussion until March eighth meeting. And then, let's see, already talked about our study session. And then Brad and myself met with Scott and talked about some updates with different things happening, COVID testing, in-person board meetings maybe started in July. Project three twenty-eight, inductible iron pipe project, and the President's Street project, which started on the sixteenth, if that corrects that, did that start on the sixteenth? And the Riverwatch lawsuit was dropped, so those are the items we talked about at the general management meeting. And that was it.
Any, any other directors need to report on meetings?
No, I just had a question, Art. Art, did they talk, did the city council in Newport talk about, or about anything to do? No, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Don't forget that, it's Costa Mesa. Anyway, did, did they say anything about the, that big donut, Randy's Big Donut and how it's called?
Not, not, they did, they did like two months ago, but they haven't brought it up again.
Because now all boarded. I mean, it looks like it's going to be one of these marketplaces or something. It's you.
I did not to go with it because of the, the requirements that were going to be, they weren't going to let them put up the big sign. They, they had to come back with a different idea, so that hasn't come. It may have come up at another planning commission meeting that I didn't attend, but the one I attended was mostly talking about the Triangle Square signage.
I was just curious because of the sewer and everything that's around there. I mean, it's a huge layout.
I know, I know, I'm not sure, I mean, we'll have, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board member need to report on meetings that they attended? We have a new business. Mike already made his speech for this position, but. Would, would, does any of the directors want to have any more information on whether we. On nominating Vice President Schaefer as a candidate to the SDRMA boards of directors? I think you're the president, you're the president, aren't you presently, Mike?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's enough of a speech.
Yeah, that's it. I'm up for approval.
There, there's no articles of impeachment yet?
I'd like to second it.
It depends on our risk increases.
You know, you know, I may just bow out of this, you guys, but come on. No, you, you are a representative for us. It's great to have you there.
I, 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 I think Mike's, you know, has done an outstanding job. We, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any approved, or any nays? Or any abstentions? If not, enjoy, Mike.
Thanks, Bobby.
Okay, we go to oral communications and director's comments. Does any director have any, anything that they want to request for a future meeting or, or, or comment on?
I, I have a question about our, our activity on Thursday morning. And I, I don't know if I should direct this to Nolani or Gina or Scott, but in these glamour shots that we're having done. Are, are they, are they headshots or are they full body shots?
They will be headshots.
So I don't have to worry about wearing pants, is that right?
Please wear pants, but they just won't be visible.
That's, that's obviously what I meant. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I think Nolani said you're supposed to wear a suit and tie. I, I've got to see if I fit in any of my suits.
You probably lost too much weight.
Yeah.
In the back of it.
I, I, I wish I could say I lost too much weight to put a suit on, Bob.
Well, I actually, the weight that I lost was in nineteen fifty, so, or no, it was, it was in nineteen ninety. For my fiftieth birthday, but. Okay, I, I have one request. I'd like a short report at. At a near-term study session on the air release valve project. And does anyone else have any, any comments or requests?
Yeah, just about that president's pump station project. Scott, did that get started already on Monday?
Yes, it did.
Okay, because you told me it was, and I said I'd go by, but I, I haven't gone by yet.
Yes, yes, it's underway.
Okay, good deal, because I saw some things in the, in the. Facebook about not the ability of the residents to get by to the park there, so I, so I knew it started. I knew at least they blocked it off.
Yes, correct.
I had, I had. Will, Scott, will you be introducing Mark, our new person, as far as saying something to us? You know how usually we're there and, you know, you bring in somebody and we, I don't know.
Yes, that was, that was done a month ago.
Yeah, we did that last month.
You did that?
Yeah, we did that in the January.
Are you looking, are you looking for like a signed business card, Arlene, or?
Well, if I was there, I guess I had fun, okay.
Well, I, I figured in your report, you might be reporting on that. Okay.
Mr. President.
Director Eccles.
Just one point is, I, I, I'm a realist and I know members of the public don't watch everything we do, especially our study session, so I just wanted to. especially our study session. So I just wanted to, uh, just update the members of the public who might be watching now or at a later date at our study session. Um, you know, our board, uh, request of staff to come back with, uh, some budget, you know, upcoming, uh, two-year budget plan, uh, two ideas, the paper shredding, uh, service, uh, services as well as the, uh, let's say, online boxes, Amazon boxes, recycling plan. So for those members of the public who, uh, are interested in that, that will be, uh, coming back, uh, in a budget review. So I just wanted to update everyone on that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, any, any, any other director?
Yeah, Bob, real, real quick, um, earlier this week, or I'm sorry, early last week, um, my, my system here, my, my company's system, we had a nationwide computer system out, outage. So every State Farm facility, every State Farm agent had no computers for about two and a half days. And, and, and what I'm leading to is that outage was due to the weather in Texas. Apparently, our company has all of its servers and all of our support in the state of Texas. And why we picked Texas, I'll, I'll never be sure, but, um, my question or my, my request is that we take a look at our emergency preparedness. And we do this all the time. I think, I think staff does a really good job of making sure we're prepared for emergencies. But in a future study session, could we just kind of go over everything that we have in terms of being ready for, for contingency, our contingencies for an emergency and um, just, let's take a look at it. I know with Brett being new on the board, it, it might help him. But I think it's a good refresher for all of us to just kind of take a look at what we're dependent on and what we're doing to make sure we have uninterrupted service.
And, and, and cybersecurity and, and, um,
Yeah.
and whatnot.
Yeah, I, good, good point.
Uh, can we go on to the, uh, the, 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 oh? Let's see, we don't close, we don't adjourn. I think we have a, some closed session items. So we need to go to the closed session room?
Yes.
Mr. President, is there still a need to go to closed session?
Um, scroll down there, Nolani. I thought, I thought, I thought there were some items.
Yeah, there are three items. Uh, one is the, uh, litigation, which is not, even though we have a stipulation, it's not been filed yet. So that was if the board wanted to discuss or debrief. Second, we have Scott's two items. One is the, uh,
Oh, oh, okay.
The other evaluation. And I, I'm not sure if that's still pending.
Well, let's see, one part of that was the board was going to give me the authority to negotiate with Scott. And I think, I think that you've done that and I have negotiated with Scott. Can I report on the, uh, negotiations?
Well, maybe you want to go in closed session to, uh, brief the board on that before you, uh,
Yes.
Okay.
Go public.
Okay, so, um, Nolani, do you, you, you take us to the closed session room?
Yes, I will. Alan, do you need to read off the closed session language before we go?
Sure. Going over, adjourning to closed session conference with legal counsel, lit- litigation, uh, under five four nine five six point nine. California River Watch versus Costa Mesa Sanitary District, US District number as listed. And also to discuss the annual performance evaluation of the general manager pursuant to government code five four nine five seven. And, uh, giving authority to negotiate for the president with the general manager pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six.
Okay, thank you. I will switch you over to your breakout room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's, let's finish it, Bob.
Yeah, no, no, we, we, the, the board gave me authority to negotiate with the general manager for his compensation. Um, and I think it, uh, with that, I think we can adjourn this meeting.
Yes.
Thank you all for, for bearing with us. Uh, looking forward to seeing you at, at his study session or other meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.